Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory for ever and ever. Amen.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item C on the agenda is approval of minutes from November first, 2021, regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item D is citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on anything other than what is on the agenda, you can step forward. Or if you're on WebEx, go ahead and put a chat in the chat box there, and we will address those. Hey, Joel.
Yep.
We don't need to move that up yet, or?
Pardon?
Do we need to move the agenda?
Um, no.
Okay.
Not yet. Yep.
Okay. Move on to item E, reports of council committees. The electric committee for November did not meet. It was due to lack of agenda items. Item two, water sewer refuse recycling litter committee met on November eighth. Jeffrey?
And we approved a B O P A recommendation to establish water review rate commission?
Thank you. And the municipal property building land use and economic development committee did not meet on November eighth due to lack of agenda items. And the Parks and Rec committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. Item G is introduction to new ordinances and resolutions. G one, resolution number zero four seven dash two one. A resolution authorizing the city of Napoleon, Ohio to enter into an economic development and real estate purchase agreement with the cultural center of Henry County, the board of education of Napoleon area city school district, and Carol Morley Beck, and declaring an emergency. Do we have the motion?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. I was just gonna kind of walk through a few items, go through a little bit of a timeline and bring a few documents up as we go along. First thing I wanted to say was that, if you recall, the C C H C, the Cultural Center of Henry County fundraiser, Pat Biello came to city council and presented on the project sometime, I believe it was in February. And, you know, since then, there had been some meetings and some dialogue about, you know, what was going on with the project. At the time when, when some of the individuals that represented the organization met with me, I discussed with them that I thought that the 1.3 million dollar number that they had originally provided was low. I suggested, or, or, I guess, for lack of a better word, well, I guess it's just a suggestion to update it just because material prices were up, you know, they're experiencing a lot of construction delays, things like that. And also that their business plan could have used an update since there was really no pro forma in their original business plan. And after, you know, several weeks of some dialogue, they, they eventually, the board decided to do that, so. But another point to make was that, you know, when, when asked, I had asked what, you know, what's Plan B if Plan A doesn't work, and there really wasn't a Plan B. So, you know, from that point forward, we just continued to have some dialogue. Who was involved was Jennifer Arps with the C I C, Molly, and Councilman Durham. And eventually, we came to the point where we met with the board co-president, Stephen Julie Bush, and the fundraiser, Pat Biello, who did the presentation. And in that conversation, essentially, was that we had made an offer to the, trying to find it here, offer letter. We had made an offer to the board. And just to kind of go through it real quick, it was, the offer was for a pledge to the project of $100,000 in exchange for loose field, which would be deeded over to the city of Napoleon. The $100,000 contribution could only be used for construction if sufficient funds were raised for the project to be completed in totality. But, you know, and this is where the kind of Plan B comes into play. If the project didn't come to fruition, the remaining property would essentially come to the city of Napoleon. And the city of Napoleon, we would commit to constructing an amphitheater on the site. After several weeks of discussion with the different representatives and the board, sorry, here, I'm trying to do two things at once here. That was, so that letter was, was on, it was in late August. Their board actually approved of a motion, the cultural center's board approved of this motion to move forward with accepting that offer, but contingent on the school board extending the deadline for the project from their original agreement for one year. So, you know, given in light of this, we'd worked with the schools. We were working very closely with them, working very closely with the C C H C board, which, by the way, Jeffrey Tangis is here with the, as the, as the new board president. And they were, you know, everybody communicated really well. We were putting together the, the agreement. This was sent to you via email on Friday. But essentially, what this agreement did was, I hate when this thing gets in the way when I can't do things on the toolbar. There we go. I'm gonna zoom out here. But essentially, it, this agreement spells out everything that was in the offer in finer detail. So, any, everything from property transactions to what happens, you know, if the project does get enough funding, then, you know, they have to see that construction and renovation through down to if the, if enough money isn't raised, to how the property transacts and what happens after that. So, but essentially, that's what this, this whole agreement did. And we were exchanging emails back and forth. Again, everybody was really, really communicated well. We, you know, we thought, you know, in the end, that, you know, providing a, a, you know, Plan B for the site, you know, something as highly visible as this site is for the city and how important it is, that, you know, having some type of say in what happens there that, that would match what the city master plan has in mind for it is what we thought the Plan B could offer. So, we drafted this agreement. We got to the end of last week. Everybody was sending in comments down to, so everybody in the agreement would be the cultural center of Henry County, the school board, the city, and Carol Back, who was the original person who had put up the money for the demolition of the building that's, you know, being supposed to be held in the Nascar fund. So, we got to the very end. Everybody, I think, was ready to sign it. And we got word verbally that, at this time, Carol Back was not in favor of signing the agreement. So, that just happened late last week. I know we talked about this a couple of weeks ago about drafting legislation, but not all parties could, could agree. Because of that, I'm gonna recommend that this issue be tabled for two weeks. Also, because Ross isn't here, and he was also with Molly, and I don't know if you have anything to add. I know Ross has, has a few things that he'd like to say about the whole process too when he comes back, but that'll have to wait.
All right. Well, thank you for the explanation and the hard work that I know you've put into it, and Molly and Ross and everybody else.
C C H C.
Yeah, the other boards and the schools. So, I'm sure the schools have been notified as well.
They have.
Right, okay.
They have.
So, we just need a.
Does Mr. Tangis want to say anything?
You're welcome. Please do.
No, it's up to you. I didn't know if you had anything.
I'm good.
Okay.
I just want to thank the city for offering this agreement with us, but hopefully, maybe in the future, we can figure out something that could work for all parties. It's best for the community.
Thank you. We just need a motion to table it at this point?
I'll motion to table it.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that has been tabled. Moving on to, let's see, item H, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. H one is resolution number zero four five dash two one. A resolution authorizing the city manager to renew a contract with Wardler Waste Control and Recycling Incorporated without the necessity of public bidding and declaring an emergency. Do we have the motion?
Motion.
Second.
Joel?
Nothing to add, added this.
Any questions or concerns? Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. All right. Moving on to item H two, resolution number zero four six dash two one. A resolution extending the provisions contained in ordinance number zero two one dash one eight and resolution numbers zero eight six dash one nine and zero seven two dash two zero, wherein council imposed a temporary reduction and/or temporary elimination of certain residential building permit fees and declaring an emergency. Do we have the motion?
A motion.
Second.
Okay.
And nothing to add to this.
Any questions or comments? All right, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, both of those will move on to third read. Item I, third readings of ordinances and resolutions, we have none tonight. We'll move on to item J, go to the city. J one, discussion reaction, approval of power supply cost adjustment factor for November 2021 as P S C A three-month average factor 0.00865 and J V two 0.038257. Joel?
I really don't have anything to add for this either. It's pretty mundane, so, average.
Took a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Joel, do you promise to say that same thing every time?
You know, we could, except I don't think we can on this next one.
Item J two, discussion action, approval of specifications and go out to bid on chemicals for the water treatment and wastewater treatment plants for 2022.
All right, thank you. We have Jeff Weiss on the, on the call as well for any questions, but this is our annual chemical bid for the water and wastewater plants. So, just looking to go out to bid and hoping for the best.
All right. Just a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. All right. Item J three, discussion or action on change order number two to Kirk Brothers Corporation for the, I'm sorry, company, for the 2021 wastewater treatment plant improvement project and increase of 71,889.74.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn this one over to Chad. I'm trying to get the memo up, if you give me a moment here.
Sure. There was a memo included in your packet. Essentially, some of the electrical requirements at the plant are undersized, and we need to upsize from what we originally thought on the plans. Some of the blowers that are required take more power than originally understood. And by upsizing that wire size, obviously, wire costs has gone up. The cabinet's not big enough to hold it because of the potential temperature increase in the cabinet by code. We have to increase the size of the cabinet, size of the breakers. And as I mentioned, the cost of wire right now has skyrocketed. The increased cost is the 71,889.74. We need the additional capacity to be able to run the dewatering facility. This fund, this would be covered through our loans or D F O. So, it is eligible for those costs, but with the size of the change order, I can't approve this without council approval. So, we'll bring it to you tonight.
In the overall loan, we factored in about a 10%. It was 10%. Yeah, 10% contingency. So, anything under that 10% is just less cost, and we have that built into our rates too. So, just, just so you're aware.
Council President?
Yes.
If I could ask, Chad, any idea what it would have cost in a more normal time?
When we discussed it with the electrician, I think we probably would have saved about $10,000 if wire costs hadn't gone up as much. Even to acquire copper wire right now, it's hard to even get it. And obviously, now if you can, you're paying a premium. We did get a deduct because obviously, we increased the wire size of what was in the bid. So, we did get a deduct, and we took that deduct at the new price. That was something we negotiated with the contractor. We didn't get the deduct at the price they bidded at. We got it at today's pricing. Yeah, probably, we probably added $10,000 to it. Someone's trying to sell me an extended warranty, so.
Ask if they have extra copper wire later.
And we looked at buying in bulk as well, but in order to obtain that pricing, this would have had to have been in the neighborhood of a million dollar change order. Fortunately, we're not there. But we did look at a bulk option, and it wasn't available to us.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve change order.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item J for discussion or action on repairs of Bale's Road storm sewer.
Well, it's probably best if Chad handles this one too. Here's, I got the memo up on the screen, Chad.
Are we gonna need more money, Chad?
We're gonna spend some money. About a week and a half ago, it was brought to our attention, a sinkhole that was found on the north side of Bale's Road just west of Friar D. After investigating the sinkhole, we were able to determine that the storm sewer that runs perpendicular to the railroad that crosses into the golf course, that pipe had collapsed. It's forming a sinkhole underneath the Transcanon pipeline. Jeff and I went out and did some additional investigating. We have parallel sewers there going under the railroad. The problem is, the other sewer is higher. So, we can't take this sewer and dump it into the other one. They combine in the golf course before they go to the creek. Or they actually go to the pond, and then they go to the creek. Because of the potential for damage to not only the railroad, but also the pipeline, we initiated actually moving forward with the project. I have a contractor that has already ordered quite a bit of the material. I hired a consultant to go out there and survey the job and prepare plans. They were there. I contacted them on a Thursday night, and you're required for minimum 48 hours for notifications and everything. They were there by Wednesday morning doing the survey in the fog. I believe it was Wednesday. Anyhow, the foggy day, they actually stopped out and started the survey. We're hoping that plans in the next day or two. I completed the railroad permit. The cost of that permit's almost $6,000. We're expecting, we're going to have to bore and jack under the railroad, which means we essentially drill a hole under the railroad and shove a steel pipe underneath it, and then slide our plastic pipe inside that casing pipe. On a recent bid on Van Heining, part of the reason that came in high was the high cost right now of boring and jacking pipe. What we usually would see around $300 to $400 a foot, we were told, on the Van Heining bids, were coming in around $1,200 a foot. We're estimating the total cost of the project to be anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000. But the project needs to be expedited just to try to not cause any damage to not only the railroad, but also the Transcanon pipeline that runs in the railroad driveway.
So, there's a clause in the charter, section 6.06 exemption from bidding requirements in emergency. Normally, in something like this, we would have to bid it out formally, but being that it's an emergency.
This easily qualifies as an emergency situation. The charter and the ordinances allow the city manager and the ops to act quickly in that situation. I imagine they'll continue to bring you information, and at some point, we may have some legislation, but we're not asking for it today.
And what fund would this be coming out of?
Sewer?
Sewer fund, which is healthy right now.
Yeah, the unencumbered balance, I think. It's healthy enough that. It's healthy, yeah.
And that's why we.
We're certainly not happy with the cost, but yes, we'll be fine.
Does this cause any problems to his, to Mr. Cotter's golf course out there?
He will have a very big hole in his golf course. We will have to repair that. Most of the turf, obviously, will have to be repaired this spring, but we're going to have to have a bore pit inside the golf course, which will probably be in the neighborhood of 20 by 40 by 10 feet deep. The receiving pit will most likely be in Bale's Road. So, when we do this work, we will have to close Bale's Road. And it will probably be for a few days. But I will, once we have a better handle on the schedule, this could potentially happen as soon as next week. Once I know definitively, I'll be in touch with the school and the transportation official and make sure they're aware, and we'll make sure we have it all blocked off to protect the public.
So, it's a second stop sign we're adding on Bale's Road?
It's a big stop.
And what are we looking for tonight?
I think a simple motion approving what's been explained so far is sufficient at this point.
Motion?
Second.
Got that? All right. Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item J five, discussion or action establishment of water rate and review commission. Just directing law director draft legislation?
Yep.
Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Item J six, discussion or action, update the resolution, or update to resolution number zero six three dash two zero. Again, direct the law director, what is that one?
Thank you, because I was asking the same question.
This is the, of the master bid ordinance where we list out, this is the.
This is the resolution that we do every year that allows us to use certain vendors and go over 25,000 because the vendors are used by multiple departments.
Okay.
They'll be in appendix with it, like appendix A, or that lists certain vendors out there that certain different departments use, and it saves us from having to come to you and to do, eliminates it for competitive bidding. And all we're asking for tonight is just to have this directed to draft legislation.
So, in other words, we're spending more than $25,000 with somebody that wasn't originally on the list when this was created?
We will update the, we update the list every year.
Every year, yeah. It still needs, I think it still needs to be approved every year.
It does, yeah.
On a yearly basis, yeah.
Yeah. Without this, we have legislation come this time every year for, we're limited at local places. And it just, when you go back to the history of council, you'll see that sometimes they had a whole lot more resolutions than we've ever seen because of this, when they created this rule to solve all that issue.
We would have hundreds. If we didn't do this, it would be a lot.
I'm impressed, impressed how comfortable you feel answering that, saying, well, we've done this every year.
There's a reason it's laptops in front of me.
All right. Could we have a motion to direct the law director, direct legislation?
Motion?
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, item J seven, discussion or action, emergency repair work at the Palmer Ditch Pump Station.
Yes. So, this is also, well, this was the pump station that failed, had the failure, and we had the, to, you know, bypass pump from the south side. So, what this is, is to request to draft legislation for the purchase of the controls. We would ask that it, we waive competitive bidding on this one, and the reason for that is, you know, your pump stations are pretty, pretty specific. So, unless you re-engineer it to retrofit something else in, you can't really do it. So, we got to get the controls for the specific pump station updated. We were planning on, good news is, we were planning on do it, doing this in 2022 anyway, but under the circumstances, the bad, the bad news is, we have to do it under these circumstances. So, requesting draft legislation to button that up.
Is this a Gorman rep?
Yes.
All right. All right. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. All right. Item number J eight is discussion or action, acceptance of donation from Church of Nazarene to Napoleon Parks and Rec Department.
Well, we were gonna have a guest here. It was, unfortunately, he didn't show up, so I guess, this, this is what, Church of the Nazarene, usually from their 5K, will make a donation to the Parks and Rec Department. Tony, I don't, I don't have the amount.
I'm uncertain of it too. I know approximate, but I need to throw a number out inaccurate.
Okay. We, if you want, we can table it and then wait for him to, see if we can schedule him at another meeting?
The gift is not currently here.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll table.
Okay.
Table that.
We don't really need a motion, we don't need to table it, it's not doing any.
Bring it on back next time.
Bring it on back.
So, okay, we'll try to have him at the next council meeting? Will that work? The special?
Just do December the first.
December the first?
Yeah, specials should just be mostly finance and budget and budget. And then the else, we have the passing emergency, right? It's not, it's not a regular council meeting.
Right. Yeah. I would check with him. What's that?
It's financial in nature.
I would say if he.
If he's gonna get past emergency.
If he can't make it on December first, but he can't make it on the twenty-second.
Yeah, that's fine.
Then do it, but.
What preference is December the first?
All right, moving on to item J nine, discussion or action, acceptance of three hundred dollar donation from Merle and Betty, I don't know how to pronounce her.
Navio.
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 All right.
It's not Navo?
It's Navio.
Navio. Okay.
I wasn't sure either.
To the Napoleon Fire Department, so you're on.
From time to time, you know, we get some of these thank you cards, and this one came with a little bit of money. They did indicate that they would like us to use this money for a training prop out of the training facility, which is nice, it's always helping to, you know, last a little bit longer, so we kind of explained a prop that we have in mind, about three hundred dollars, I ain't gonna pay for that prop yet, but as, as it comes in, we, we know that it's something that they would like it to be used for, so super appreciative of it, and as we know that they don't have to do that, so it's very nice.
Thank you. All right, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, item J ten, discussion or action, acceptance of ten thousand dollar grant from Ohio Department of Nature, Natural Resources to the Napoleon Fire Department. All right. Chief?
This would be that grant that we've asked to apply for, for the mobile repeaters. So we did receive the check in the mail to pay for it, reimbursement grant, so we had paid for those repeaters upfront, submitted all the proper paperwork, and that's where things led, check is coming back to just now accept it as that final grant's done. And the repeaters are in, and they're, they're working, but as we talked about in budget, they're, they're, they're a great addition to it, but it's still not the, the end all be all, so.
Thanks, chief. All right, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Item J eleven, discussion or action on acceptance of trenching grant in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred eighty-eight for the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the Operations Department. Chad?
Yes, Jeff and I have prepared a grant application for this. This was an item we were actually going to put in our budget for twenty twenty-two. However, we were able to get this grant, which will allow us to get some trench boxes for the Operations Department, which obviously is a big safety issue, and along with the boxes themselves, it will provide some training, so that, not only the proper use of it, but also if something were to go badly, they'll give you some instruction on how to fix that problem. This is the first time we've ever applied for the grant. They are on the way. We don't have them yet, we think it may be a couple months until they show up, but we do appreciate how your Bureau of Workers' Comp awarding this grant.
Does the state require any sort of legislation for this, or they?
No, not on this one. Everything we needed in the application, we already had.
Okay.
So we should be all set for that.
Thank you, Chad. All right, need a motion to accept?
A motion.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
All right, we'll round the table here, and start with Kevin.
The only thing I have to report is, I just appreciate everyone's efforts in the last couple meetings that we had for the budget. My first time around, you guys made it pretty smooth for me, so I appreciate everyone's efforts, and we can continue to do that next year too, as we wrap it up. That's all I have to report.
Feelings mutual there. Ken?
I have nothing.
All right, Dan?
I have nothing.
Jason?
What time we gonna do next Monday night? What time we gonna start financing budget?
Is there any other meetings that night?
Usually, that would be safe, finance and, and safety and human resources. We don't have anything for safety and human resources. Civil services meeting.
Six.
Tuesday? Yeah.
Sure, what time?
It's the clock.
The normal time is six thirty.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, six thirty. Is that all right?
We'll do the normal, six thirty.
All right. Ask for an executive session for compensation of personnel. Should figure out for non-margaining. Like I said on, on Saturday, I'm pretty sure that was my ninth budget cycle, and I don't remember anyone ever going that smooth before. So obviously, a lot of people had their homework done ahead of time, and it really showed all day on Thursday, you know, and on Saturday morning too. Also, really appreciate on Saturday morning, obviously Jennifer Upshurst was first one in, and then Chief Mack, and it's Chief Mack was here, I think both the chiefs came in at the same time, and I appreciate Chief O'Brien sitting through Chief Max, but then Chief Mack reciprocated and stayed for Chief O'Brien's on, later on Saturday, so that, that, I'm not sure how many other organizations have that happen, so I'm glad it happens right here. Kevin, I want to talk to you after the meeting for some of the, the graphs for next Monday night to make sure that, so one can show the entire budget, the general fund, the sixty-two thirty-eight split, where we're at right now, and then show reciprocity in the next slide, so we're showing what we're getting in for reciprocity, to include the positions we're gonna add, and the third slide is a combination of those two. So this is what we'd have without the reciprocity, and next slide's reciprocity, and the third one is just the total numbers. We put that, if we put that together, as I think about, so we can show our citizens, we passed reciprocity for these positions, and here they are, here's what it looks like in the, in the total budget. That would be just the, the only change I'd have from previous years would be, we're gonna add that in there, so I appreciate that, so, that's all I had, thank you.
Hey Laurie? Chad?
Nothing.
Holly?
Nothing, thank you.
Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Joel?
Leaf pickup is gonna be probably extended a week, so for those that need it.
Yeah, we don't have all the leaves down yet, and it doesn't make sense to stop.
Yeah, but we started today, and so, yeah, we'll go an extra week if people need it, they can just call in. We, Rox brought something up today that I, I think is pretty important. You know, all of the end of the year legislation that we normally do, I don't know if we have it all in here, Billy, do you know if we have it all?
If we have it all, what?
All the, Rox, do you know which pieces of legislation, there was, there's usually a, a litany of different pieces of legislation, so, yeah, I don't know how we want to handle that, you want Rox to put them on there to direct the law director to draft them, or, or what, so I'll just have Rox get with you, council president, and then go from there and see what's.
I can give Rox or council president a list of everything that is ready, and we've got it all ready, so.
Okay. That would be great. And then, you said compensation of personnel, was it? Is there any other?
I don't have any other.
Okay. Then. I think that's.
Unless you can choose, you can have a development.
Well, I'll request that we go into executive session for purchase or sale of real estate? All right. I didn't have anything today, so I have a motion to go into executive session for compensation of personnel?
A motion.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. And a motion to go into executive session for purchase or sale of property.
Motion?
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Have a motion to come out of executive session for compensation of personnel.
A motion.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. And a motion to come out of executive session for purchase or sale of property.
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. All right, item L, approved payment of bills and financial reports in the absence